I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we would call this meeting to order. We have the pledge taken care of, roll call. All members are present except Jerry Tippel, and he had contacted our administrator and has an excused absence for this evening. To that end, item number four, additions, approval of the agenda. And before we get to action from the council, item number 14 and 15, which was proposed to possibly have a closed meeting, that has not come to fruition, so we can omit item number 14 and item number 15 on the agenda. So no action item on that. So with that, what's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve the current agenda with the two closings.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Don, to accept the agenda with the additions mentioned of 14 and 15. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time and extension, seeing none, pass unanimous. Public comment. It's your opportunity to come to the lecture, share your views as it relates to, hopefully if there's anything at all about the items on the agenda. We will, when we get to item number, let's see, in Bill's response, planning commissions, we will allow, Henry, it's easier for me to say, what's her name, first name again?
Maureen.
Maureen, yeah. Maureen will allow you to come forward at that time, at 10-2, item number 10, subsection 2. Second call, anyone that would care to come to the lecture?
Does that mean?
Yes.
That was the time?
That is correct. Move the lecterns. Yeah, please advance over here, Jeff, and then state your name and address if you would please for the record.
Jeff Howell, 10251 County Road 47. You know, I'm here with regards to the Hydricks and then pick up some power source, and the request for a... Conditional use permit. I guess I've got the same concerns I have when I sent the letter in. You know, the home extended business, when you look at the definition, it's supposed to be, as you look at the definition, clearly incidental and secondary to the residential use of the premises. And if any of you have driven up there, I will, I would ask you to tell me how that looks, secondary and incidental use to the residents. To me, that looks like the primary use, and I got a feeling that that's the way it's going to continue to be used. I did talk to Maureen, and it sounds like they're going to build a new building to do that work in there for, if they get this conditional use. And I would say that if they're going to build a new building for that purpose, I don't know how or why they would move away from that and not continue to use it. So that's my objection. I tell you what, when it's, if a thing looked like Mike's place did next door to them, I probably, and operated like that, I probably wouldn't have a complaint. But if any of you live next to that, that's a challenge. Thank you.
Speaker Jeff?
I'm Sherri Howell, and I live at 10251 County Road 47, also right there by Maureen's quest. I'd like to tell you what it's been like for almost 30 years living next to them. We have caught them using our property, our driveway, to drive whatever they want to load up on their trailers, stealing apples from our trees, clearly on our property, start fires when they're burning that Jeff and his brother have had to put out, entering our home when no one was there to finally catch Maureen entering after I didn't purpose to the doorbell to see how far and how long it took her to get into my house. She got into my living room when I came out and caught her. Listening to Justin, ride whatever he wants up and down the driveway. It finally took me, when Jeff was deployed, to finally call the sheriffs because after 10 o'clock, a big huge piece of equipment they were using to move dirt, after 10 o'clock at night, move dirt. So that's when I called the sheriff's department. You have the reports. The sheriff recommended I call the environmental services. You've got that report. No one's been on that property since then, but there's evidence of things being on that property that shouldn't be on that property. All of that, so the sheriff had recommended since Maureen, and they did not know where the property line was when they were working, I had to come up with $1,200 while Jeff was deployed to pay for my land to get surveyed so they knew where that adjacent property line was. I had to come up with that, $1,200. These people do not understand laws, personal space, personal property. They do what they want to do, and by giving them one little leeway, it's just going to continue on. So if she wants a temporary permit and building a building that's going to cost her $50,000, you think she's just going to up and leave. And her property runs into our property, along our driveway, down to our ditch, all the way down to the Dittman's holding pond. I saw Justin, who they have been doing their business since May, without permission, rinsing out their driveway, the attached garage after he's worked, so that's all running down too. There's just so many issues that's, they don't, their ethic of working and treating people, it's not there. And it's always a game. And I've had restrained so many times from calling the sheriffs until I was home that night.
Okay. Thank you, Sherri. Any other comments from the public as it relates to the governance of the city of Rockville? Three minute max for individual.
Carol Dittman, 10059 County Road 47. I can clearly understand, like I said last time, where the houses are coming from. The, dealing with Maureen in the past even have to do with the Rockville Festival. It has not been productive, or it has not been in agreement. The noise that comes from there, unfortunately, Peter Walsh was not able to be here because he has another meeting that he's attending this evening, but you know how strongly he feels.
Okay. And then, Mr. Bodie is correct, there was a time and effort for a public hearing input, and that was at the Tuesday night council meeting, I mean, at the Tuesday night, last week, Tuesday, right, Bill? Yeah, last week, Tuesday, and those comments that are being addressed right now were there. I was at a observer at that meeting.
Okay, I've got another question then. We have so many buildings, not only in Rockville, but in St. Cloud, that are vacant. Wouldn't renting be a better option if they plan on moving? And, the other question is, and this is hearsay to Brian Herberg, Councilor Herberg. My understanding is that your son is a good friend of...
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's still in the way to a public hearing, I don't know that.
I'm asking if that's true, that Brian recuse himself from any voting, because it's a personal interest.
And to that end, each individual council member makes that decision, not the public, not the mayor. The value of, the sanctity of having a conflict of interest is to protect the individual that's voting. So that's Brian that has to make that decision.
I hope he makes the right decision.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Any other comments as it relates to the governance of the city of Rockville?
Hi, my name is Jesse Luckarath. I live at 25699 Lake Road. And just, please stop me if I'm not understanding right, but I just wanted to retouch on something from the public hearing that I felt was a concern from the members. And that was that for my variance, for my accessory structure, that it will match my primary structure. I just wanted to reassure everyone that I do have a plan in place where everything that be, between the roof and the soffits will be brown steel, the siding will be red steel, and then there's be a wainscoting on my accessory structure, which will resemble the retaining walls on my property. I just wanted to say that I lived at this property the first 22 years of my life. I plan on being there the last 50 years of my life, and I want nothing more than it to be homogenous with my neighbors. I want to blend in and not stick out. Driving home last Tuesday, I did see between Klein Electric and my house, there were 10 accessory buildings, all of which had vertical agricultural steel on the siding, and all the houses either had brick or horizontal siding. So as far as the homogenous, I think it's going to keep up with the neighbors, and it's going to blend in. Thank you.
Okay. And when this comes up, it's under Department of Reports, Chairman Becker will be reporting to us his, their findings at the Planning Commission, and that would be under 10A2. And so at that point, if we have additional questions, we'd be contacting, chatting with you, so please stick around for that department, 10A2, okay? Thank you. Oh, 10A1, I'm sorry, I stand corrected. Thank you. Any other comments as it relates to the governance of the city of Rockville? And the pickup power and sports will allow dialogue at that point, limited. Okay. Last call, any other public input as it relates to the governance of the city of Rockville? Has all the others been, have all of the others chatted before we give Carol a second chance back up at the podium? Maximum of three minutes, you don't have much time left.
Regarding Chapel Road, evidently there's some...
Carol and you are?
Oh, Carol Dittman, County Road 10059, County Road 47. Regarding Chapel Road, there's supposed to be some shouldering of the road done.
Item 10B.
Yeah, I travel that road quite a bit, and not quite sure what shouldering is going to be done, but if something, somebody wants to do something for safety purposes, instead of adding shouldering, how's about thinking about maybe putting some guardrails where the quarry is and where that deep pond is on the other side for safety purposes?
Have you contacted...
If that's the intent of...
Contact the administrator with that concern?
No, because I was just looking at stuff today, so...
We gave that directive to our city engineer to prepare for us a quote for shouldering, and that was the charge, and we'll be talking about it tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments as it relates to the governance? Seeing none, I shall close that public comment section. We will now move into item number six, Resolutions 2019-32, acceptance of 2019 resolution. Motion would be in order. And that's the donation? Am I correct?
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second. Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill to accept the donation, and the donation is from Chad Smith, Ride for Life, $500 to the Rockville Fire Department. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Contrary, same sign, and the extension's none, pass unanimous. Thank you very much, Chad Smith, Ride for Life. Okay. We will now move to item number seven, approval of the July 19 bills paid. And Mr. Herberg, I believe there would be a conflict of interest in one of those.
Yes, I would like, I make a motion to approve the bills for July, but I'd like to abstain from check number 019230.
And as for the blading of the roads?
Correct.
That is correct. Okay, there's a motion by Brian.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Don, to accept the bills paid, approval of the bills paid. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Contrary, same sign, and the extension's none, pass unanimous. We are moving along. Consent agenda starts on page 20 of the packet. It can be approved in one motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda without reading them.
Okay, motion's been made by consent agenda, and there's a second, there's a total of five. If you've read it, and it's on the minutes or on the agenda, all those in favor of that consent agenda signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nays, and the extension's none, pass unanimous. We are now Highway 23 Coalition 2020 membership, Connie Schmo. Hi, Connie, welcome. Please advance to the lecture. You have something to circulate to the council?
I sent several files, and I'm not really sure what came through and what didn't marten, so I did bring some copies. Mayor Willenberg, members of the Rockville City Council, good evening. I'm Connie Schmo. I'm the Business Development Manager of the Candyway County and City of Wilmer Economic Development Commission, and a member of the Legislative Committee of the Highway 23 Coalition. Thank you for allowing me some time tonight on your agenda. I do want to go over the activities of the coalition, the membership on the coalition, and ask for your renewed membership for the year 2020. It's been a pleasure working with you as a partner in the Highway 23 Coalition. Highway 23 Quarter plays a vital role in moving freight, goods, and people from the northeast to the southwest corners of the state of Minnesota, and vice versa. An improved Highway 23 Quarter benefits this region's agricultural, manufacturing, and wholesaling sectors, and it enhances safety for the regions, many people that commute, the general public, and tourists traveling to the Lake regions and back. We've come a long way as an organization. In a span of two and a half years, we've gone to hardly no membership and no structure, to approximately 100 members. We have an 11-member board of directors with representatives from Marshall, from Wilmer, from St. Cloud regions. In March, we held our annual meeting at the 400 Club by Rockville here. That featured the Mindat Commissioner, and we had several representatives from our state and senators there. It was a really good meeting. We kept it within an hour's time, and it was active and had a lot of information, and a great meal, I heard, as well. In October this year, we're planning to hold our fall general membership meeting. You're going to have to go a little further this time, Mayor Willenberg, and that's in Granite Falls. That's coming up in October. The Coalition's public-private partnership continues, one that has businesses and government working together to solve problems. Today, we have 64 businesses, 28 units of government, and other entities that have put money into this nonprofit organization. And I think the hard work by our volunteers has been paying off. The Coalition chose to focus its first efforts on obtaining funding for a continuous four-lane connection from Wilmer to I-94, which is essential to Minnesota and greater Minnesota's economy and workforce. As you know, in 2018, the Minnesota Legislature approved the bonding bill with $105 million for both gaps in Highway 23, the seven-mile south gap and the nine-mile north gap between Wilmer and St. Cloud. But we're not done yet. There are other critical infrastructure improvements that are needed on the Highway 23 Quarter. In the fall of 2018, the Highway 23 Coalition pulled the member cities and the counties and asked them to help identify and rank priority projects along the quarter. And those would be projects that could be supported during the 2019 legislative session. Members submitted 32 proposed projects in all. From there, the working group, and with feedback from our cities and our counties, they prioritized and selected four projects to support in the 2019 legislative session. And that's the first four-circle map that you have. On one side of the map is the project descriptions, the other side is the map locations. The four projects include the Farthest North Priority Project, which is the construction of a roundabout in the city of Foley, near the Foley Public Schools. It's scheduled by Mindat District 3 for 2020. And it's the undertaking of a four-lane feasibility study covering Highway 23 from Foley to Malaca. And the goal there is to decide on the preferred route for a four-lane road. The next project for the south would be the construction of the county-state aid Highway 55 railroad overpass project that would connect the new interchange at Highway 23 and County Road 5 on the southwest side of Wilmer, and that would include a 50% local match from Candyway County. The third project involves intersection safety study at Highway 23 and Highway 7 in Claricity. The Coalition has approved providing $5,000 toward the study's local match by Mindat. The Farthest South Priority Project is construction of a four-lane extension of Highway 23 north from the city of Marshall to the city of Green Valley. And this would be viewed as a transportation expansion project. The other thing they did this last year was expand the area of the Highway 23 Coalition. It now goes all the way from south of Marshall and Pipestone area all the way up to Foley. And they're continuing to work, working on more expansion of that Highway 23 Coalition. And that's at the direction of our federal government, to call it a federal state aid, or a federal...
Corridors for Commerce?
Yeah, corridors for commerce road. They have to have it across the entire state. So they continue to work on that. On February 22nd this year, the Coalition testified before the House Transportation Committee at its field hearing in St. Cloud regarding these projects. We also sponsored the legislative reception at the Capitol, and that was during a snowstorm. Even the bus that was going to take us backed out and said it was too stormy, but we had a caravan of cars go down, and other people met us down there. And we had a great turnout with about 25 state legislators and other staff members, and the Minnesota Department of Transportation Commissioner, Anderson Keller, who also attended. Some people came just because we had lunch, and they didn't want to go outside the Capitol in the storm to get their lunch. We were disappointed that the 2019 legislative session ended with no bonding bill and a status quo transportation bill. Using the Green Lake analogy from 2018, we were in the boat that year, and we had a big catch. We got $105 million in funding. In 2019, there were people in boats, but they were all going different directions, and nothing happened. But the Coalition's not going away. We continue to push for infrastructure improvements. We monitor the progress on the two four-lane gaps, and we're pleased that District 8 announced in April that they're moving up the timeline for the south gap, and they're going to be doing both gaps at the same time. So they're moving that up one year. And District 3 is moving up the timetable for the I-94 Highway 23 interchange. It's the half-quill project right here outside of Rockville. We had looked at that as one of our priority projects, and then found out it was already funded and going to happen. So we're glad to see that happening, especially for safety reasons and time reasons for economic development for truckers. We're getting ready for the 2020 legislative session. We will continue to support the priority projects that are on the handle I gave you. We believe it's important for the Coalition to be visible in St. Paul and Washington, DC, and that we need to pursue the state and federal funding for roadways along the quarter. We want to make our presence felt in Washington. In June, we had 16 Coalition members travel to Washington, DC, and your mayor was one of those. Thank you for going on that trip. They participated in productive meetings with U.S. Senators Tina Smith and Amy Klobuchar, Congressman Colin Peterson, Congressman Staub, and others. And they had a meeting with the Federal Highway Administration. They were lobbying for funding for the Highway 23 Quarter, and specifically for projects that they have endorsed, and for federal rural freight quarter designation. The city of Rockville has been a member of this active coalition since 2017, and you joined at the 1,500 advocate level. Thank you. Your continued support and membership is really important for us to help meet our goals. I encourage you today to pass a resolution to renew your membership for the next year. Thank you. I stand ready for any questions you might have for me.
Thank you, Connie. Questions of Connie as it relates to the report that we are a member of in the council? None?
Thank you very much. We are in a budget process. We're going to have a special session next week, or next month, this coming month, and hopefully we'll have the money for that to continue, Connie.
Sorry.
It won't be tonight, but it'll certainly be in short order. And if I can add a footnote, it's been unbelievable, the amount of effort, when you have that many government entities and businesses all pulling in the same direction. And when we were out at DC, the movement, and I don't know if you're aware, Connie, there is life beyond Rockville going east or west. If you've been that way, they are working on the 2394 as we speak right now, August 5th is when the north bypass or the north line. So it's moving along. It's working great. And anyways.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Connie. Say hi to Aaron and the gang, please. Very good. Now, we will, and it does not take council action at this point, Department of Reports. Chairman, Mr. Becker?
We have two items on our agenda tonight from the Planning Commission. The first is Resolution 2019-34. This is the Jesse Luckarath variance. The property is located at 25699 Lake Road here in the city of Rockville. There's a number of variances that are, that come under this umbrella. Number one is to locate a new accessory structure in the front yard of the property. Number two, additional driveway, Chevy would like to be added. Number three, in your packets, it says accessory building siding won't match. That is not true. It will match. And number four is added as the size of the building, which is 50 by 80 feet. Property is Zoned R1. It's in the Shoreland Overlay District. Property contains five point, approximately 5.5 acres. House sits to the close of the rear yard line. That's the reason the building would be in front. Nine public notices of hearing were sent out. We did have a public hearing. Nobody spoke against this particular, these particular variances. Planning Commission is recommending approval.
Okay, you've heard the report from Chairman Becker. What's the wishes of the council? Any questions that you might have? They have representatives here this evening to answer.
As part of my chairmanship duties, I do talk to property owners on variances, because a lot of people don't want to come and testify. I found no one that was against this.
Great testimony. Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brian, second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Don. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to go ahead with Resolutions 2019-34, which is the variance application. Please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nays, and the extension, seeing none, pass unanimous. Okay.
Next item on our agenda is the Hydrick, and I'm not sure I pronounced your name right, Pickup Power and Sports Inter-conditional Use Permit. The property is Zoned Ag 40. Property size is 12, approximately 12.6 acres. The property owner was informed prior to them moving that this is not a permitted current use. Property uses adjacent to the west is residential, 12.18 acres. East is Zone B2. North and south properties are ag. 11 notices of public hearing were sent out. We did have, excuse me, we did have two neighbors testify that particular evening against, and then we have quite a bit of written reports in your packet tonight of another neighbor that was against this CUP. The Planning Commission is recommending denial.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the chair from their body. At this point, I believe, Bill, you and Administrator Bodie met with Maureen. Either you want to just discuss at all what transpired? I seen that there was an afternoon blurb that came out, I shouldn't say that, an email, and I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page singing from the same song sheet.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have received a call from this, I read, asking if she could have a meeting to discuss possibly reconciling concerns that I've brought to the county of Rockville. And I agreed to that meeting, and I have to hear from Becker this day. I agree that meeting was last, this past Monday at 11:00. Basically, we took the 12 concerns that were expressed... Basically, we took the 11 concerns that were expressed by the neighbors and those that were written or asked, we put them off bullet form, then they, or me and her son adjusted. And they then had, we had a lengthy discussion on how to resolve those issues. Yesterday, she brought in a packet of material that I sent to you, and yes, it's also in a complete package, that she has, she and her son have been done cleaning up the property. I don't, I don't want to speak for the applicants, but she will always provide ways that they were, they were, they were willing to clean up the property, they were willing to meet certain conditions that the council felt was necessary. And so, based on that being made from that information, based on that conversation with Chairman Becker, I did provide possible conditions. If you were to choose to go against the Planning Commission recommendation, which is a council's right to do, I wasn't advocating for or against, providing options.
Okay. Mr. Becker, would you care to, Bill chime in at all about that meeting, the demeanor?
Marty summed it up appropriately. No, I have no more further comment.
Okay. Was this, any discussion from either or? First of all, Maureen, if you'd care to move up to the lectern at this point and plead your case to the council at this point, just to, and we will try to keep it at a three-minute, if we may.
Is it possible that I have my side on the stage?
And so, Mr. Bodie is a timekeeper, and so share your name and address for the purpose of the record, and then address it to the council.
Okay, absolutely. Maureen Heisrich, 10213 County Route 47, St. Cloud, Minnesota 56301.
Yes, please proceed. You had a meeting, Mr. Bodie had a meeting with you and Mr. Becker?
Yes.
And if you would care to share it to us, to the council, because we weren't at that meeting, we've taken Mr. Bodie's version of what he felt. We've heard Bill's version, we want to hear yours.
Absolutely. Yes, we did meet. My son was present. And what we did is we, we heard, we heard what the neighbors' concerns were, and what we did is we tried to address the issues for each one of them. Okay? If I can just say this, I've been on the property for 27 years. I owe a deep apology to Sherri Howe. You know, some of these issues were like 20 years ago, 10 years ago. My husband's been gone for five. That equipment and stuff like that must have been eight years ago. So I have to go back on it. I do remember the sheriff coming to the house. It was about nine o'clock. I think there's a nine o'clock cutoff. I have my son and...
Maureen, really let's focus. We only have three minutes. Focus on, not the background, but the one-year commitment.
Well, I owe Sherri Howe an apology. Okay?
You can do that in your time.
Apology, okay? I am 69 years old. Hopefully, God willing, I have worked on myself, and I am wrong. Okay? I've done some issues here that need to be cleared up, but I hope to talk to Sherri at some time. Okay. Justin, do you want to talk here? We need to do it because you're out of time.
Yeah, and we're meeting with them on Monday, and we're talking about issues with the MPC. Yesterday, you already have an account with them from our last building. We transferred that to this address. I mean, we're willing to work with whatever you guys suggest to help out. We kind of got sprung on moving out of our building pretty quickly there, and we never intended on doing this to Jeff and Sherri in the first place. And we're only looking for like a year temporary deal, not to rezone it, you know, for all the time being. And I plan on building out of our land as soon as we can. We just bought a blank piece of land. There's nothing out there, so it takes time. And...
Meeting's straight.
Yeah, and I'm meeting out there tomorrow to get working on the septic and everything.
Justin, could I just make sure that it's clear, this land is in another community?
Yes.
Okay, it's not this subject land, okay? Got it?
And we just have to build everything out there, so it just takes time.
Jeff's, Jeff's point was if we improve, if we turn the building on the property?
Well, we have a problem where our shed's fallen down, and we've been debating tearing it down for years. I mean, Jeff's fell down, I don't know how many years ago, and he redid his. I think the roof collapsed or whatever. I don't know how many years ago that was, but we kind of need to do something to sell it to the next guy. I really don't want to stick any money into the shed. I'd rather just tear it down. I'm open for any suggestions, whatever Jeff's up for too, just to make the property look better, so it's better for the next person.
And hopefully we, the property values will go up in, in the area. This type of...
Focus on the one-year commitment that you're asking for.
Yeah, we're just asking for the one year, and by then I want to be for sure out of there. We just have to keep working at it to get out, to get built out there. So it all takes time.
And when you say built out there, meaning again, not Rockville, but another community?
Yeah. If I ever intended on making a business at where we're at, I would have dozed those woods over years ago and put a shop up right there. And I don't intend on doing that at all, because I don't think it's right for the next guy to come in and buy the place.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sure that we have our three-year minutes used up at this day. I understand, I understand, and I think that, you know, if we're going to head, very seldom do I ever advocate that we should go against the recommendations of the planning and zoning. Very few isolated cases in the years that I've been here. I think this gives me an opportunity to suggest something to the council, and that would be that it looks like there's movement, but the background and the history almost tells me I shouldn't. But I'm a firm believer in businesses in the community, and if somehow or another the council would see the validity in giving it back as a council action tonight, giving it back to the planning and zoning for one more bite at the apple here. I realize that we have a 60-day timeframe that we need to act on it. And if that was the wishes of the council, that they agreed, that we'd have Maureen, Justin, work with the Planning and Zoning Committee, Mr. Bodie, surround ourselves with competent paperwork to make sure that it's covered. And if we go that route, and if there's so much as a sneeze that doesn't come out properly, the, and the city noise maintenance, or noise, there's just a whole horrendous amount of things that I think that it's an uphill battle to make it work. But I'm willing to go out there, if the council members are, and give you an extra opportunity. And we'd have to have a special meeting if, if the planning and zoning makes a recommendation to go for it. If they recommend don't, then, and if it doesn't tonight, it's dead in the water. But that's something I'm just recommending to the council members at this point.
I do, I do have a question, Marty, just from previous discussion. Yes, it is a question. Can a CUP be dated?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Why, there was this...
Are you talking about the one-year time limit?
Yes.
And that can be regimented.
I just want to make sure that's clear to everybody.
Yep.
I did have, like I previously said about the previous variances, I did have discussions with neighbors again in the last couple days. I did not want to sway them in any way of either, whatever. But I threw out some things. What about conditions? Didn't go over very well. They don't, they want their neighborhood, so just being open and honest with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Maureen, did you get the email this morning that I had forwarded out to the council? They did not receive the listed condition.
Okay. And rather than to have an in-depth dialogue tonight at a council meeting or so, I think it would just be, and if the council says, no, Duane, you're, you're pushing, you know, a log chain here, it's a lot easier to pull one than it is to push one. But if you were, if, we've seen the validity in, in suggesting that the council have Maureen and Justin go back to the planning and zoning and see if there's some ironclad conditions that would be created for that one year of interim use till they get set up on another spot. I think that's the reasoning that I'm suggesting that we can consider doing that. And it would take council action for us to revert it back to the planning and zoning for continued dialogue. But we have to be cognizant of that 60-day timeframe. And that would be not from planning and zoning, but from the application date? Is that correct? Maybe Sue, you can help us out.
Yes, and they have, I received the application.
Okay.
So if the council, if they would decide to take the planning and ask that that motion to be a day extension?
And that could be granted from Maureen and Justin? That says if it takes additional time?
I just...
They're already operating there, so I'm assuming they're going to stay.
I just want to make it not clear, but advantageous to the neighbors that if that does in fact happen, they need to be involved because...
In that dialogue.
They're the ones that...
Yep.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Except or deny the conditions. Sue, do you have a...
I do have some comments on, you know, a conditional use is something that is approved under the ordinances, but it comes before, well, I, I think the council's decision-making is twofold. It's one, does this, does this proposed use fall within the conditional use language in the zoning ordinance, which does allow home extended businesses in a accessory structure under certain conditions? And two, then, are there conditions that are going to alleviate any of the concerns that are raised because of this use, such as noise, such as traffic, such as odors, pollution, that sort of thing? So it really is, you don't have as much discretion with the conditional use permit approval or denial as you do with a variance.
Thank you. It wouldn't need a environmental assessment worksheet or some EAW, but certainly conditions we can make stringent, and Bill was right on, and that is if, if the council gives it back to the, to committee to review, make sure that the public is aware of when those meetings are, so that the public can have their input into those specific conditions, you know, noise and environmental concerns are the two that pop into my mind almost really high. So what's the wishes? Thank you, Maureen and Justin.
What's the wishes of the council?
Do we see the validity in giving it an extra chance?
I, I think if the council is looking at any kind of possibility, I think it would be wise to send this back to the Planning Commission. When we looked at this before, there was no condition in front of us. At least there's some conditions here that we can look at, we can do some dialogue. Maybe in the interim time, Maureen and Justin can try to work things out with their neighbors. Maybe things would help there. I, I understand the fact of people trying to operate businesses out of their home, and I think there's some circumstances here that have some merit. So that's, I, if we're going to do that, I think that would be the just way to handle this right now.
Okay. Donnie, care to chime in at all?
Well, it's, and it would, they got the acreage there, but my concern is here now, if they put up another building, and then a year or so from now they move out, and there's other sites, they're going to have your building and a home right there. Now, how is this property going to be, being you got a residence over here, and you have a residence there? Now, you have a big shed or something in there that might not be suitable for the neighborhood of people that would like to live there. So I still have a little problem with putting a shed in there or building to work out for a year, you know, when you're going to have this other property. And I think it's a lot of financing involved there too. So I'm, I'm not that...
Yeah.
In favor of going ahead with it right now.
Yeah, not, not trying to shed wind on the, on the thing here, but I believe I heard Justin say that they would be demolishing that existing building and then replacing that with another one. And that would be a building permit, and they'd go through that planning and zoning as they would anything. So it wouldn't be adding additional structure. And I seen Justin nodding his head. Any other comments, Donnie? Bill, any last minute?
I'm good.
Okay. Would there be a motion from anyone?
I'm, I'll make that motion to send it back to the Planning Commission with review and extension on the 30-day, so that we don't run into an issue there where it automatically gets granted.
And it's time certain? We don't want to have this thing last forever ever, so it's next month?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second it, just so that it doesn't die for lack of discussion. The thing, any other conditions yet that we, or anything else that we could give as a directive before we vote here? Any other discussion?
I just want to...
Too bad we don't have the fifth one here. And that could give us one more additional one if we do make this...
I just want to add, Sherri did call me and talk to me, and...
Sherri?
Sherri.
Okay.
And his thoughts was exactly what the motion is right now.
Okay. And was that, you made the motion with the condition of one, one-year time certain?
Well, it would be all the conditions that have been presented here.
Okay. Well, just go back to planning and zoning, and planning and zoning would have lots of bites at the apple again to do it.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Were there any others, Mr. Bodie, that you wanted to have in that motion?
Just the 30-day extension.
Oh, the 38-day extension, that's right. And that would be in your motion? That was in there. Okay. And I'm assuming...
This is they're doing now?
I'm sorry, that's inappropriate.
Yeah. And so, at this point, any other discussion? Donnie, or so? I'll call the question, and this is to go and give it back to planning and zoning with the one-month extension, so that we don't bump into that 60-day rule of needing to have the Planning Commission report back to us, and then we act on it, so we can add. So unless I hear anything different, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Okay, there's a split. Let's have a roll call vote.
Question, Member Becker?
Aye.
Mayor Willem Bre?
Aye.
Member Simon?
Nay.
Member Hurd?
Aye.
3-1.
Very good, thank you. You've heard Mr. Bodie, it's on a 3-1 to report that back to the planning and zoning. Good luck, Bill, in your group over there on that for the next month. And Maureen and Justin, thank you very much. Looking forward to your willing participation. Okay, thank you very much. Now we will move along to, where are we at here? City Engineer, Justin, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Two items on the agenda for you this evening. First one is just a simple authorization approving pay application number one to Minnesota paving and materials for the 2019 street maintenance project. That is in your council packet.
Page 92.
Page 92. I have reviewed that pay application and would recommend approval. And the total amount is, sorry, $424,635.38. That includes just a status update of where they're at with the project. This application includes majority of the paving that was completed out on site. They have since this, since that time, worked on the shouldering, topsoiling. They do have some topsoiling left to do yet along, and fattening up along the edges of the shoulder and, as well as signage. So they're nearing completion, and again, my recommendation that you approve this faster.
Okay, I sense a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-35. Donnie, did you have a comment?
I have a comment regards to this. I drove that road today, and other shouldering, I don't know if it was from this past rain, or a lot of that shouldering washed out. I know the shoulders are steep.
Yeah.
Can we have, is that probably get it back to fix that?
Yeah. That's part of the topsoiling that needs to be done yet. We need to bring in some material on the backside of those shoulders to, to support those shoulders and keep them in place.
Because someplace it's almost washed out near the, blacked out. Then the other issue I have is with some of the culverts they put in, on the inlet side, there's no riffraff to put in those. Some dirt washed in already on the culverts. There's no, like little rock riffraff put there to keep the dirt from going in. Maybe you want to check that. I know it's one spot already. The culvert is set, it's deep to water, took some dirt in there. So those are my main concerns, but otherwise it looks pretty good to me.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And the support over here. So I heard Donnie's first. So all those, let's see, motion by Bill, seconded by Don to proceed with Resolution 2019-35. I'll call the, oh, any other discussion? Donnie, any other concerns? And it looks like Justin is on top of that, so. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign, any abstentions, none, passed unanimously. We're back in sync here, gang. Thank you. Please proceed.
Second item for your consideration this evening is a follow-up to Chapel Street. Again, Chapel Street was a road that was included in last year's project. Shouldering was completed on that roadway, as typical, there is a steep, fairly steep portion of that roadway, and the way the contour of that roadway sits is that the existing road edge is sloped all the way down into the existing road edge or the shoulder material essentially, so there is no ditch, or, you know, there's essentially no ditches where the water can be taken and traveled along the roadway edge, or instead it travels along the roadway edge, essentially travels along the shoulder and washes out the shouldering material. We have tried some alternative fixes, putting in some larger rock, Gene's worked on it a little bit, hoping that, that that would do the trick, and it has not. It's, it's helped, but there is still washouts in areas, I think it's going to be something we're going to be battling on a continuing basis. So we did take a closer look at it, looked at a couple options, looked at possibly putting in like a bituminous curb in there. Concern with that is just with the width of the road being pretty narrow there, the amount of snow that's in that area, and plowing and things of that nature, it'd be better to try to avoid that curb, especially in that rural area like that with minimal area to plow. So an alternative that I, that the contractor could do that I think is a, is a very good alternative, is to actually essentially pave a shoulder along the edge in place of the existing gravel shoulder, it would be a paved shoulder, we dig down about eight inches, remove the existing shoulder material and the, and the soil underneath, it would be three feet wide, three feet beyond the existing bituminous edge, and then we lap mill one foot onto the existing shoulder edge, and that shoulder would be sloped towards the roadway, so the roadway crown slopes like this, and then the shoulder material would be like this, so essentially it'd be like kind of a bituminous swale, I would call it, where the water would stay and follow the paved, the paved area, rather than off the edge of the pavement and onto the, onto the soil on the edge, washing it out. So I think that would be a very good method to alleviate the problems along there, and we got a quote from our street maintenance contractor, Minnesota paving, the amount of $32,850.
Justin, is that on both sides of the road then, or?
It would be on both sides of the road. The west side would be all the way from the top of the hill down, basically the full length from the top of the hill all the way down, then the east side would only go to the, once you get to that driveway on the east side there, it would only go to that, it would be north of that driveway only, because then there's a ditch from that point south, where it matches into the county road, there's an existing ditch, and there's no issues with the shouldering on that, so.
Do we have the funding?
Absolutely.
Had to ask.
One question, Justin, on top of the hill, that residence there, I talked to a person, I think when that road was done, like there was really no approach put in there, I think it's right on top, Ms. Weber's place.
Yeah, through the, so through the one driveway that's in the middle of that area, that, that paving would be essentially completed through the driveway, so, so that the water would, would follow through the pavement and would-
Because the water kind of comes from, be from the east a little bit, right?
Yeah.
Going west there, okay.
Yeah.
Because a lot of it goes down her driveway, I believe.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve 2019-36 to Chapel Street, shouldering quote for 39, $32,085.
Okay, you've heard the motion from Bill, is there a second to that motion? I shall second it so that it doesn't lose for lack of seconding discussion.
Was there another quote or been put in on this, Justin?
Again, we, you can see the mobilization on this was pretty small, so we just went straight to our street maintenance contractor, figuring that more than likely that would be, his, his prices here are very reasonable, considering the, the putsy type of work this is, just capitalize on him being already here and mobilize with the street project, so.
Okay.
We certainly could obtain one if needed, but I don't think, based on the prices, that I would see there would be a need.
Yeah, mobilization looks like $3,400 one-time payment, correct?
Movement, yeah.
So, Justin, the question I would have, and that is, it's four foot wide, so our public works director is here, so that'd be an adequate spot for us to take that snow and set it either on that four-foot ledge or just beyond, so that when it starts to, assuming that we go ahead with the-
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
-water going down that, the Inverg portion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you know, that road is kind of in a valley, so it really depends upon the snowfall, you know, how much you can bank. I mean, if you go quick enough, you can throw it out there far enough, so I would say probably yes. On a typical, typical winter, you know, any amount of sunshine in there, then it helps melt it, and it could create some more room for the next snow.
Any other quick, thank you. The other quick question, Justin, has this been done before someplace? It's not that we're to-
It's certainly been done before, yes, yes.
I'm not doubting your engineering capabilities, that's not it, I just wanted to make sure you're not the one, so. Comments, other comments? Seeing none? I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion to go ahead with the Chapel Hills, Chapel Street shouldering quote 2019-36, all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Seeing none, passed unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay.
I think we're all set. Justin, that's it.
That is it.
Nothing else for you?
Thank you very much, keep up the great work. We got a public works report presented to us, came in on Monday, I believe it was, there was six items, no council action needed. Any comments? Gene is here.
Building, her building looks very nice.
Ah, thank you, yep, yep. They did a good job, that was Veterans Painting did it.
Very good. Yep.
They're out of Cold Spring.
I believe so, yeah.
Yes. Any other comments, questions as it relates to public works? Seeing none? Gene, thank you again for your great work.
Yep, thank you.
Anything under council action, Mr. Bodie?
No, sir.
Okay, mayor's report, really very limited, we haven't had RTCB, nothing that registers in my mind right now. Help me out here, gang, if there's anything that you want to have as council members?
I haven't been to nothing, no.
Brian?
No.
Okay. We do have one other item that I would like to, and that is a highway, no, it's a, something that was sent out to us this afternoon, and that was the RACF, Recore Area Community Foundation is having a concert for ca, concert for cause, Rockville, Cold Spring, and Richmond are part of that group, not necessarily the cities, but last year it was the pad in Cold Spring, this year Richmond is getting the funding going towards pickleball, and something that's related to it, next year will be Rockville, I shared this at the Lions meeting, what would be, the concert for cause is coming up, and I don't know, Mr. Bodie, did you circulate, you don't have a copy of that this evening, do you?
I don't have it in my desk, but I just sent that to you.
Well, that's fine, it was in ours, and it's just, again, can somebody help me out to the date? I think it's next week in this-
It's next Thursday.
Thursday. Tickets are sold at the three-city council, at the three-city chambers.
Yep.
$20, $25 beforehand? $20, I think it is?
Wait, something like 20 or 25.
Yeah, and Richmond. But the important thing is, so we as Rockville have participation at that next week, Thursday, and it's at the Lions on the south side of- Bill, do you have it handy there by chance?
No, no, but it's just next Thursday, you can buy tickets at any of the city halls.
Yeah, it would be great. And then next year, Rockville's turn to have the concert for cause here, so we should come up with, and Mr. Bodie and I have briefly talked about something that would be relevant to the Recore Trails, and it's way too early, and it's RACF, so it's not a city's function, or it's not a city sanctioned thing, but the RACF stands for Recore Area Community Foundation. So anyways, that's all I have at this point. Now, the special meeting is not needed tonight, but we do, or the closed meeting is not needed tonight for the thing, but 13-1, and that is special council meeting for the preparing of the 2020 budget, and so typically we'll have the, all of our division department heads come in to the council with their, not only wish list, but need list, and then we have the dubious honor of trying to match that up with the desire and the needs and the cost factor, so.
Are we trying to get that for August?
Should we set it up? The 19th was a date that worked for me, no, the 19th was not, but any other date for me would work other than the 19th.
The 26th?
Oh, I'm going to be, oh, that's, could we do a-
I'll do it, I'll send out.
Yeah, do it, we don't-
Send out, yeah.
Sit here all night.
Marty, the 26th is out for me, that's the only day. I'm sorry, it's the only day that's out.
Yeah.
I'll send out a bill.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, nothing else, or I'll make a motion to adjourn? Very good.
Second.
27, 28, 29, Marty, I'll be out of town too for summer time, so. There was a motion by, and it's not debatable, a motion over here, Bill, seconded by Don, to adjourn, all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It is adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.